Welcome. Welcome y'all to our August fifteenth Rain County Board of Supervisors meeting. I'm gonna call this meeting to order and I ask Craig, would you pray for us?
Let's pray. My God, of all creation, we humbly bow before you now. We thank you, Lord, for your presence here with us. We acknowledge, Lord, that we need your wisdom today. We need counsel from on high so that we might make decisions that are in keeping with your will that are in the best interest of all citizens of our county. My God, thank you for our staff, for those who serve so ably and capably, Lord. And thank you for our law enforcement officers, our first responders, how they sacrificed so that we might have the freedom, Lord, to kind of participate in our government. Thank you, God, for the blessings that you've provided to us and we don't take them for granted. We thank you. We know we don't deserve it. Thank you, Lord, for all you do in Christ's name.
Amen. All right. We do have a little change in the order. We need to accommodate John Sullivan. He has some real reason that he needs to get in here and get out and won't take five minutes, probably.
Wow.
Mr. President, with your permission, under my section of the agenda, which would be section seven, we're gonna look at items L and M. These would be pro- public hearings on any protests that have been filed, of which we've had two different property owners file protests, for a total of three. One of the property owners has two different PIN numbers that they have filed protests on, so there's two property owners and three protests. We will start by opening the public hearing under item L for the ARCP AS Flowood Mississippi LLC Academy Limited. This is parcel G eleven dash seven dash thirteen. Representative is Evan Porus. And so we will open that public hearing. I'll ask if there is anyone here on behalf of ARCP AS Flowood Mississippi LLC, Doing Business Academy, anyone here to speak on that matter? Academy Sports, Mr. Porus? Mr. President, I don't see anyone here to speak on that matter. I understand that the protest that has been lodged is in opposition to Mr. Sullivan's valuation of approximately eight point one million dollars on this piece of property. They are asserting that the actual value that should be for tax purposes is in the neighborhood of about six. Is that correct, John? And so we pulled a property summary report for one fifteen Freedom Boulevard, which is in Flowood. This is the Academy Sports location. They have the property listed for ten million, six hundred and fifty thousand dollars, so we feel that our eight point one million dollar valuation is accurate. We would make the request at the board, go with your tax assessor's valuation of the property, which means that you will reject the objection.
Mr. President, I'd say we accept Mr. Sullivan's values and reject the property owner's values.
Second. All right. Bob makes a motion. Jared seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes.
Mr. President, item M is the Exide Technologies, personal property PPIN nine one seven three and nine oh one eight. The representative for Exide Technologies is Eric Peterson. Eric Peterson will open that public hearing. I'll ask if there is anyone here on behalf of Exide Properties to speak on this matter? Anyone? Mr. President, I don't see anyone here speaking to speak on the matter of the Exide Technologies objection. John has made a valuation on the personal property side. Again, this is personal property, and so we would be in a position to accept John's recommendation on that value.
Would you close the hearing?
I will now. Thank you. We'll close that public hearing.
Make a motion, we accept Mr. Sullivan's values and reject the landowners?
Second. Bob makes a motion. Jared second. Any other discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes.
Just item, John, do you want to cover your section or do you want Ms. Law to cover that for, or Ms. Wyman to cover that for?
No.
All right, great. Mr. President, with your indulgence, if I may, we have Ms. LaMell Ivy, who passed away recently. Her funeral is at ten o'clock this morning, and so we've been asked if, with your indulgence, to move the discussion of the primary election to this point and come back and pick public comment up after we get through with that. That's with your indulgence, if the board is willing to entertain that request.
Yes.
Okay. So we'll move into item six on the agenda, which would be discussion of the primary election.
Thank you, Craig. Last, well, two days ago, Tuesday, we asked people to come that have a part in our elections and discuss, I guess, from the top down where we had some mishaps or some problems with our voting. What we want to do is work all together and determine if we have a problem in any section of that or any layer and what we can do to make sure that doesn't happen again. I think it's a productive meeting. We need to all be together where we all hear the same thing, and there's no finger pointing. There's no, at this point, we just need to look at it and determine where our problems were and how we're gonna fix it. And I'd say let's probably, Ms. Boyd, being you're our circuit clerk, can you come forward and tell us how, from your office down, did you look at your stuff and how your office and, I guess, all of the resources that you provide, did they seem to work okay?
Yes. Our office does absentee voting. Okay? All of the absentee voting was correct. We run reports every night to make sure that the ballots that we give out matches up with the computer report. So all of our ballots were correct. The ballots were printed correctly. They were labeled correctly. So everything in our office was done correctly. I think the issue came on Election Day. We started getting phone calls from people saying that they went to the polls to vote and that they knew that there was a certain person that they should be voting on and that person was not on their ballot. So at that time, I began calling the election commissioners because they're the ones that are in charge of the polls on Election Day.
Do we know how many precincts were involved?
Marcus, is Marcus here?
Marcus is here.
He's in the box.
Okay. Marcus, do you have that report?
The election commissioners would also have an accounting report that shows-
Say it again.
More detail than I-
Do what? I didn't hear that.
The election commissioners would also have some accounting reports that would probably have more detail than I have. But there were a number of precincts that, where people were, people received an incorrect ballot. And we just used some information that we had available to us to reconcile that, but the election commissioners have more detail than I have on my accounting reports, you know, to provide that. But-
Your report doesn't show how many precincts, though.
A lot of, okay, we have what we call split ballots.
Right.
Okay. A lot of the precincts that were involved in getting the wrong ballot really did not cause an issue because it was like between the House and the Senate, and those people did not have opposition anyway. So those did not cause, I mean, it was bad that they got the wrong ballot, but it did not really change anything because they didn't have any opposition. So when you start talking about how many precincts were wrong, probably the majority of them, I mean, would you say the majority of them had some type of problem or half of them?
Yeah. I would say in the neighborhood of half. You know, the information that I have indicates somewhere around ten precincts that had-
About how many?
-had ballots swapped, about ten precincts.
Well, we've got forty-eight, don't we?
The ten precincts that-
That's where you had people that were actually, I mean-
Right, that had opponents.
That had opponents.
Right. The other ones did not have opponents, so it didn't-
So they didn't really show up.
Right.
Right. Really, you know, kinda hard to say anything about those that didn't really show up.
That's right.
Right. Okay. Well, I guess if the ballots were right and the right ballots were, went to the right precincts-
Right.
Then that's all, I mean, I guess that's, we don't have to hold you up here and just keep going on and rolling over things. So I guess, Marcus, you were in the field on Tuesday, so I guess we need to move and to our, the next layer would be the election officials, let them explain to us what they saw and what we need to- Would that be the next- Is that the next layer? All right, thank y'all. Thank you. Thank you, Beck.
Don't leave me up here.
I don't know. You might not wanna go far.
I think you're good. I won't go far.
Well, if someone from the election commissioners wants to speak and help us, now's the time. Good morning. Good morning.
Good morning. Where you want me to start?
Just- Just jump in, I guess. Yeah, what, I mean, I guess, we can't just say that ten, all of them that were affected, where, what went wrong? What happened for us to have, like, catastrophic given wrong ballots if we had nearly half of our precincts?
To start with, this is the first time using the new equipment, using paper ballots, that we've had major splits, lots of splits. With the avotronics, it wasn't as big, it wasn't as difficult to keep it straight because it prompted you right in your face, and we gave out the little ballot style cards. This is all new to them. We've thrown a lot at our poll workers over the last two years with all this new equipment. And it seems like every time we have an election, we've got more and more to tell them, new stuff that's changed, so they're having trouble staying on the right page. It is very difficult. They're very overwhelmed. We get overwhelmed, and we deal with it a lot more than they do. Factor in the average age of your poll workers-
Yeah.
Pretty high, by the way.
Can you, can you tell me and others that don't know, whenever somebody comes and wants to vote and they give you your ID, our equipment, whenever we were buying this, I remember them, it would print off a receipt, and on that receipt, it would tell the poll worker which ballot in case you had splits.
The poll pad, too.
Is that where the problem, I mean, somewhere, no?
I just don't think they comprehended the reason behind ballot styles, the differences. We trained it, we've said it more than once to them. We sat in some of the precincts first thing that morning helping set up and made sure they separated the different ballot styles. I'm not really sure why they didn't comprehend the need for the differences and the need for the separation, and to be exact. The poll pad check-ins, the ticket does print, the ballot style is almost in the center of it, the font is large, by the way. I don't have to wear my glasses for that one. I don't know. I don't know.
So what, human error on the poll?
That is the only problem.
What can we do, what can we do to help y'all? I mean-
We've done a lot of discussions on this since Election Day, a lot of thinking, and I think until they get used to it, and I think to make everyone feel better about the runoff, I highly suggest that the executive parties, mainly the Republican, that's the race that we're really had issues with, y'all are welcome to do it. We need somebody in the precincts, one person designated to each precinct that has the splits like that, to sit with the poll workers and make sure they understand. We can only be in one place at one time. We can't be in all of our precincts at the same time.
If we could get, if we could get people, y'all would have to give them some type of a little-
We will put them on the-
... receipt, or something they could show, ID. But if we could get people, one person for each precinct that has a split, so that way we wouldn't have to have all of them.
Right. We don't need it in all forty-eight. They don't all have it.
About half? No. More than half?
Eight. Eight have splits on the runoff.
Really? Oh, okay, because of runoff, okay.
Yeah, we're just on the runoff.
Well, prior to that, though, how many do we have in all?
How many had splits in all?
How many splits did we have? Ninety-six. We had, we had ninety-six.
I mean, that's a lot.
I mean, precincts had, I think they said twenty-something.
Most of them.
Most of them.
Most of them?
Most of them.
But if we only have eight?
This time.
This time, the runoff.
I feel confident that we can get, I mean, I'll go, if I'm eligible to go, I'll go to a precinct that's split, and maybe we can get the executive committee to have a, if they could put up four or five, we could get two or three other volunteers to help y'all, and we, that-
That's the only way we know to handle it at this point. I mean, we have trained till we're blue in the face. We have broken down training. We do three different training classes, and we do two or four, four, of each one. I don't know how much more we can hold their hands and simplify things for them.
We're not the only county, let that be known, that this, that had this problem. You know, this was in other counties, too. But we discussed, and maybe it was, I don't even, I think y'all are here, there is a state statute that says this is how much you can pay a poll worker. And in today's time, it's not enough.
No.
What do we pay?
It's a joke.
Hundred, hundred twenty-five dollars?
A hundred dollars for a regular worker. The manager gets one twenty-five.
A hundred dollars to be, to be there for twelve hours, or more than that.
Oh, no. Oh, no. They're there at least fourteen hours, at least.
Oh, yeah, I forgot.
And y'all know, we tried to, you had asked that, we tried to increase that.
Right.
And the statute stopped that.
But at the end of the day, and we do recognize that y'all have made that effort, and we do appreciate it, but at the end of the day, it comes down to, you kinda get what you pay for sometimes.
Right. I understand. Well, we can try to, through some of our legal help, try to see if we can do something about that.
So is it?
Do it, okay. We do have some people that go to-
Right.
Larry has some relationships over there. I think that needs updating bad.
Yeah.
Oh, most definitely.
I mean, if we could pay a fair amount of money, then we probably could have a little more enthusiasm and maybe even different participation at the poll.
Maybe.
I wanna say one thing, though, if I can, just, as this was all going on, we discovered it that morning, in the morning hours that was happening. And I spoke to Leslie a couple times during the phone. I believe, and I can only speak, I guess, for our precincts on our side, on Leslie's side, but I believe we got all that corrected by noon-ish timeframe that day, that it was only the morning hours where we were having the problem separating the ballots and the right tickets going to the right people. So I think we got that corrected pretty quick in our area. I don't know about their other areas of the county, but from our standpoint, and all we're really concerned about right now is District Two side, and that overlaps up in Steve's area, because we got split boxes. But I think we got that fixed in the noon hour for the rest of the day. It should have been right in that area. Is that right?
Up the mountain, yes.
Yeah, at the Pisgah box.
There was, I think, I think it was so much that they couldn't be at all of them, so there were some that it did go on further into that.
But we had some, we had, we were aware of it that morning, and we started trying to make those adjustments to get it corrected as the day went on.
Once we became aware of it in any precinct, we would get right on it.
Right.
I mean, we didn't let it wait until seven o'clock at night.
And that's one of the things, I wanna be sure we get out there and express to everybody that once we identified we had a problem and it was going on, there was actions going on to try to remedy the problem as best we could, so that's what I wanted to mention, because I know, I spoke to you around noon, and we were moving pieces at that point, trying to get it corrected, so that's the main thing I wanted to-
And I, I think everybody that responded, we, it's not fun to ever have a problem like this, and it does cause emotions, and, but I think everyone that got to the polls, including Ms. Boyd, I mean, she was here in her office trying to run down every trail that came in, whose right ballot went, and this kind of thing. I think Jay, Jay went to a precinct, Daniel went to the circuit, the office, our clerk's It was attacked and it was shut down. I mean, I say shut down, it was, it's bad that it happened, but at least we responded and we know we can fix it because we know what the problem is. We, we'll get together after this and find us, if y'all need eight, however many we need to make sure we cover them, we'll see if we can't get that, and I'll work with y'all. I'll go to one. And if, I don't, I don't know that there's anything, is there anything else?
We do understand, too, I will say, and I've heard this, and I don't know the answer to this at all, we understand your, the, I don't know how to word it, really, the issue with having older people doing the polls. And, but there's, I know it's extremely hard to get the other age group because they're working or have families, but they're working. And I've seen that, they're very dedicated, I will give them that, they're very dedicated, and they're, they're the ones you can always call on. I think, and so I'm very proud of them and sympathetic.
We have a great group of poll workers. Make no mistake, even regardless of their age, they do everything they can-
Right.
-to be there. They are trying their best, they are trying to learn it.
It's just-
We have just-
It's just that split deal.
It is just overwhelming.
That's really the only thing that I've seen.
And you really will not ever understand it, the public, nobody, y'all will never really, until you work that poll, until you've attended a training class and seen all the information that we throw at these people, you're just never really gonna fully understand what they're going through. And you just don't know how you would react in the same situation, once you get in a poll and you put a line of voters and, voters are great, but they're in a hurry. They're trying to get to work, or they're on their lunch break, or they're going home from work and they're tired. They're irritable. Our poll workers really put up with a lot, just from the voters themselves, and it is intimidating and it can really get you flustered, and once you get flustered in the polls, it's really hard to keep up and keep straight.
Right.
So, but we do have an amazing group of poll workers.
No, and I, I've been to a lot of them, and I know that.
And we have their backs one hundred percent. They did the best that they could.
I defend them.
And once they were told the issue, they did their best to keep it straight and correct it.
Seems like the split part is the, I guess, the major thing to be able to overcome.
Splits are of the devil.
It's almost wish it could be totally, completely, I don't know, I don't, is there anything that we could do as far as, I don't know, legally change anything that would make that easier for them?
I mean, we've got, well, you got judges that have different districts.
I mean, a lot of these only have four districts.
Representatives that have different, it's-
So it's a spaghetti-
Yep.
Bowl, where you love to start looking at district boundaries. We do everything we can when it comes time to redistricting. We'll get how we lay those district boundaries out as best we can, and if we can get those to line up together, that's obviously optimal, but when you divide a county five ways for some elected officials and four ways for others, you're going to inevitably run into-
Right.
-boundary line issues that create ballot splits.
Well, we've also got your House splits.
Did you add in the things that we don't control?
Yeah.
Which is House and Senate seats and Public Service Commission and Highway Commissioners.
And all that other that comes inevitably, Supreme Court judges, Court of Appeals judges, all of those boundary lines are disparate, they're different. So it, inevitably, we will have to deal with ballot splits at every election, and we, I think, at the end of the day, we've got to address, I think it is a function of repetition, repeated elections where the same workers are addressing the exact same considerations, and eventually, they will fall into a routine that, that then can be made workable. We don't want to do this. You know, another thing that seems, that I think Bear's pointing out here, is the discovery of the error, as it's in process, is almost dependent on the voter. If the poll worker's unaware that they're handing out the wrong ballot and the voter doesn't pick it up, that error will be repeated and compounded until finally somebody says something. You may, in fact, be way on over into Election Day before somebody finally realizes, there's something going on with this ballot that doesn't sit, sit right. So I wanted to point that out in that, if you don't know that there's an error and you're not told that there's an error, you'll keep making the error.
Well, I'll tell you how simple, I heard just yesterday, somebody said, "I didn't vote for the other side of the ballot." I realized later, I didn't vote for you because you were on the backside of the ballot. They just voted that one side. I mean, so as simple as that-
And see, our poll workers tell them.
Nothing said flip it over.
Double-sided ballot, flip it over. They tell them all day.
Who would do such a thing like that?
And two, once the problems become aware-
Oh, he was with me when he got over that. I was like, go ahead.
Once the problems become made aware to us, once we've been made aware, it still takes time for us to get the word out to the rest of the precincts in hopes that they haven't done it, but if they have-
Yeah.
-we're trying to stop that, too.
I mean, if it's something that simple, you don't even-
And the best way to do that is send a text, and then as you make your way through-
My money's on my-
And they don't all check their texts, they can't, they're busy. So, and two, keep in mind, we got five hundred, right around five hundred poll workers we're trying to teach this stuff to. It's a lot. Like teaching a kindergarten class, I threaten to get the ruler out and pop them for not listening.
How we can get Ms. Oster help? She's in retirement, by the way.
All right.
She's approaching that age bracket, isn't she?
Oh, you just went there.
Whoa, hey, I'm separating myself.
I didn't have nothing to do with that.
All right. Well, thank y'all, and look, I will work with y'all, I'll go, I'll go to one precinct, and we'll get with the executive committee, see if they've got some people that we can use just to be kinda like a poll watcher. And then if we can help, whatever we can do, I know state statute limits us to how much we can spend training, but whatever we can do to get this in front of them, maybe again before November, between now-
Well, we won't have a problem then.
Oh, that's right, yeah.
We don't have it for four years.
And I don't think we're gonna have it again after this.
Okay. All right. Thank y'all. I, one more, not with you, not, not with y'all, Marcus, will you explain what we were discussing earlier, because when we bought, this equipment's not old. This equipment was bought with this term, and we all picked, this was the Cadillac. I mean, we thought.
We bought what they gave us, too.
Right. We had the Secretary of State have us an advisor here that really guided us right to this equipment, and we spent a lot of money on it. And one of the things we spent the money on was the fact that you could transmit the results very quickly with the modem. And two of our major elections, the last two, we've been told we couldn't use it, from the Secretary of State's office. But now, we're finding out that we, we could use it from now until the end of the year, but after the end of the year, I think you said that the modems were not gonna be sufficient. Will you explain what happened there?
All right. So from a Secretary of State's standpoint, they're still telling us that, you know, from what I understand, that, that we should not use the modems. They're not saying, shall not use the modems, but we shouldn't. They don't want us to use the modems because of an issue with, you know, there's a lot of public perception about election security right now, and people are concerned about election results in some way being changed or manipulated to change the outcome of races. So there's a lot of public perception around that right now, so a lot of people are moving away from, from using the modem technology. Us in, I think, DeSoto County, we're the only two counties in the state that have the capabilities of doing that, and both of us have taken the Secretary of State's advice and stopped using those modems. Now, from a technology standpoint, the technology behind the modems that we purchased with the equipment was running on 3G cellular technology. So these, these modems were data devices, just like you would use a MiFi for your laptop or something like that to get you on the internet, and the technology in those devices was tied to the 3G cellular network. We received notification from Verizon that as of January twenty twenty, they will be sunsetting the entire 3G network. So there will be, no longer be any tower antennas for these devices to connect to, so they will no longer function as of January twenty twenty. A lot of cellular providers are already starting to decommission towers in rural areas and stuff where they're putting up new antennas, they're already turning off the old, the older 3G technology if they don't have anybody connecting to it, they don't see a purpose in keeping it running. So we're already losing coverage area, but as of January twenty twenty, they're just gonna shut the rest of it down. The option there to keep the technology running as of January twenty twenty would be to purchase a 4G cellular device for each, for each of those units, and we spent quite a bit of money to purchase the original modem. So if you've still got the Secretary of State, you know, perhaps we get a new one, perhaps that, that opinion changes, but if you still have someone telling you that you shouldn't use the modems and, you know, and you're looking at a regular, rather large purchase to upgrade your cellular technology, is it, is it a feasible benefit for you? You know, really, we, we gain a, you know, thirty minute, uh, maybe forty-five minute advantage, uh, by using the modems, but we still have to count absentee ballots out in the precincts, which is a huge time burden on the precincts. They still have to process their entire line once they close at seven o'clock. Um, if they have people in line waiting, all that line has to go through, I know there was one precinct with an hour wait. After that hour line was processed, then they had to go, go figure out on each absentee, whether it can be counted or not, based on whether those, those people showed up to vote and changed their vote that day. And then they had to process and scan all those absentees, then close down their polls and their equipment, and then bring the equipment back to us. So you've got a huge time delay there, um, you know, before they can even close the equipment, at which case, we would still be at a time disadvantage, having to count our absentees in the field, a lot of the um, counties with the DRE equipment don't have scanners, so they're still able to count their absentee ballots back at Election Central. Once we went to putting scanners in the precincts, the Secretary of State's office told us that we had to do that, so, um, so then we had to handle that out in the precincts, which is a huge time delay. So that, that's a huge thing that we should be, you know, talking about to legislature to hopefully change, hopefully change that.
Well, it's, thank you, thank you for that.
Is that in federal or state law? That's gonna be state.
Okay. That, um, I guess the irritating thing is that we spent a lot of money. A lot, nearly a million dollars, and about, well, uh, thirty thousand on those modems, and it was at the recommendation of our state. And I think we've used them one time, and now they're obsolete. Not, I mean, which they don't want us to use them at all, but even if we tried after January, I'd say we got bad advice. And, you know, I, I hear it, you know, around Election Day, over and over and over, for a week or so, I thought y'all had this thing where we'd know who won, you know, an hour.
Is everybody with a flip phone gonna be, uh, out, outdated come January?
So, everyone with a three G cellular device has received notification at this point that they need to upgrade their device, all the cellular companies, Verizon, AT&amp;T, all have different timeframes of doing this, but they're all trying to u- reuse that, um, radio spectrum space for faster technology that, you know, has replaced it. So, all of them are looking at sunsetting that network to, you know, to disable that network so that they can reuse that radio spectrum to serve other things.
Would you, uh, get with heart and see how much it would cost to get us upgraded?
Sure, I'd be glad to.
Well, but Jay, there's no reason to upgrade if we're not confident that we're gonna be able to use the modems.
We wouldn't buy them unless the new Secretary of State would be willing to let us do it, obviously, but.
Right.
I, I hope that may change.
I got, I got one question, Marcus and Michelle, I may need you to answer to whatever. All that being said, all the problems we had, issues, whatever, tell me where we're at right now on election results. I mean, as far as everything has been posted, numbers have been counted, all the ballots are in, we've checked everything, we've checked our system to be sure whatever processes that took place are validated, vetted, and our election results going into the next ten, fifteen days on runoff side, where are we at right now as far as official results, certainty of ballots, and those type of things?
So as far as certainty of ballots, I'll let the election commissioner.
I may should've asked Becky, but I know she slipped out, Michelle, you're here, but, uh, just some kind of.
She certified this morning with the Secretary of State's office, we verified numbers, everything's certified. We've got the new, new election in place, all the ballots, uh, we're about to send those counts to the printer to get our ballots printed. Um, we have eight precincts that will incur splits.
Okay. But as of today, we're done, set, y'all are good with the numbers, everything's balanced, you know, I guess, that's what I was checking, thank you.
All right.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank y'all very much.
Thank you, Marcus, thank y'all.
All right, let's move on, um, it's gonna be a long day. Under public comments. What's, uh.
They, they may wanna know this election part's over if they don't want to listen.
Mr. President, why don't the election commissioners, like, we're, I, I, I think it's a fantastic idea for us to explore the, the possibility of having some, almost in the nature of poll watchers, uh, folks that can be there as a reminder about ballot splits, I think that's a fantastic idea. I, I do, I would like for there to be, and y'all may already be planning this, but we probably need to consult with the Secretary of State's office, and just be confident that if we're asking executive committee members to serve in that capacity, there's not an issue there.
They don't have to be executive committee members, we're just saying.
Yes, so. Okay, very good. Yeah, I, I just wanna make sure that Secretary of State gives us clearance on what, if any, rules may apply to those who are serving in that capacity, so, thank y'all.
Thank y'all. All right, under our public comments, uh, in recognition, we have Dave Van, First Executive, come on forward, y'all.
Good morning, sir.
Good morning.
Good morning, thank you, Mr. President, fellow pastor presidents, board supervisors, thank you for letting me come for you today, I appreciate that, I'm with Region Eight, mental health, it's my twenty-second year to come in, in front of you, and, and I'd like to approach and give you my annual report, if you don't mind, sir.
Yes, sir.
Senate Bill twenty-one hundred requires me to come before you at least once a year, give you our annual report, and summarize the services that we're providing and answer any questions you might have about Region Eight Mental Health Services, and, and, uh, the report gives you most of the data, I think, that you need to know, but what's not in the report, report is, uh, a statement of our appreciation for you guys, and thank you for supporting Region Eight. Uh, we are, I think, the leading behavioral health agency in the southeast, and it's because we have uh, folks like you guys that have been instrumental in the success of Region Eight. Uh, not just you guys, but everybody else in the room with Chancery Clerk's Office and the Sheriff's Department, uh, Ms. Oster, who used to be my boss, uh, as a commissioner at Region Eight, and, uh, even Buster back there, was instrumental in helping us develop, uh, the property over Marquette Road, so, um, we served about seven thousand individuals during the, the last fiscal year here in Rankin County, about a little over seventeen, seventeen thousand five hundred in our five county region, of course, Region Eight, uh, in Rankin County is where administrative offices are, and we serve the most individuals, and we have one hundred eighty-two employees here on this campus here at Marquette Road. We have an array of services that I don't believe that a lot of folks have, uh, as far as access. Uh, our biggest issue is the, uh, the rate at which we're growing, uh, we open about three hundred and fifty new cases every month, and we could hire about six new employees with a master's degree in mental health-related field every month, and, uh, also, uh, a new physician, nurse, and pharmacist about, uh, once every six months, and our institutions are not putting out, uh, that many people. So, we hope that we'll somewhat stabilize, um, in the future, but right now, uh, we are serving, uh, another three hundred and fifty individuals every single month, and of course, mental health is not like primary healthcare or physiological, where you X-ray bone, it's broken, you fix it, and you move on. Uh, they stay with us forever, and, uh, so again, we appreciate your support. Your support goes towards, uh, us serving individuals that cannot afford to pay. Out of seventeen thousand something individuals that we served over the last fiscal year, uh, somewhere around half of those individuals either cannot pay or do not have insurance, and that's, uh, uh, including Medicaid or private insurance. So we, uh, very much need your, your allocations to ensure that we reach everybody in Rankin County that's in need of mental health services, and we in a timely manner serve those individuals. Uh, last fiscal year, uh, we hadn't asked for any additional allocations, uh, or an increase in allocations in over fifteen years, and I'm not asking for it today. Uh, as long as we, uh, can, uh, pay our bills, uh, I would not do that, and so we appreciate what you do give us. Uh, it's three hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars, and, uh, we spent nine million four hundred and sixty thousand, about nine and a half million dollars on our Rankin County campus over here in the last fiscal year. We're available twenty-four hours a day, we've got inpatient services, psychiatric, uh, hospitals, inpatient services for alcohol and drug services, uh, alcohol and drug needs, and, uh, we've got, uh, sixty new homes that's been transitioned from the state to, uh, the local communities, Region Eight. We've taken on a lot of the, uh, housing responsibilities of the state, of course, if you read newspaper all in the last eight years, you would know the federal government, so, and the state of Mississippi's saying that in the mental health system, they're too institutionally heavy, so we expect, uh, some kind of ruling to come down in the next couple of months that will certainly, uh, increase services, uh, the needs of services in all of our communities and counties throughout the state. Well, Mr. President, that's my presentation, if you have any questions, I'd be glad to, to answer any questions that you might have, sir.
President, how much, sir?
Yes, sir.
I know, I'm, he's not paying me the money, every year he gets up here and talks, he gets up here and brag, on, on both sides, uh, on, on the, uh, employee side and, uh, the inmate side, I tell him, bend over back with the sheriff's office, and, uh, I want to tell you that, a lot of people don't understand, that we have an officer involved shooting or use of force issue, a serious use of force issue, I make the officer go and have to be evaluated, and, and see, you know, make sure they're fit for duty before they return to work. And if you look, you know, I have to pay them while they're out waiting on this, they bend over back with, I'm telling them, they get them in there, get them, if they need help, need, uh, some additional, uh, services, they make it happen, and, and they get up, get, uh, me and them back to work, bags for me, uh, they don't drag their feet on anything, I just wanna tell you one example, on the other side, on the inmate side, of course, they're at the jail every day, but I had, you know, I'm proud of my trustee program, I had a trustee that got out, he fell off the wagon, got him back on crystal meth, and instead of, you know, hiding it, he called me, he said, Sheriff, said, I messed up, I'm doing crystal meth again, I called Dave in two days, Dave had him in a rehab, instead of us, a couple of months later, having him back at that jail, which costs us forty-five dollars a day. They have, uh, the rehab to have, the average working man can afford it, he gave him that rehab, the man had me back to jail, so, I mean, that's just saving us money, I, I, I was a better candidate, I appreciate what they did for him.
Thank you, Sheriff, for the time and work.
Thank you, Brian, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate it, Dave.
Dave, thank you for the management, and being able to come in here and say, I'm not asking for additional money.
Absolutely, absolutely, if the Lord's willing, I'll do it again next year.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you, thank you guys.
All right. Oh, man, of course, Carl, next on the list, Carl. You're not asking for any additional money either, are you, Carl? Well.
Y'all always had me following interest in people, before Mr. Van leaves, I may need talking about, I may need some of his services.
Just don't ask for, just don't ask for an extension.
Additional days.
Like I said, I may need to talk to him about some of his services, uh, for people personally. A couple of things, I wasn't here just not too long ago, but I do have a couple of updates I need to do. Uh, just briefly, the first two things, uh, just kinda let you know, uh, where we're at on courthouse and the misdemeanor. Right now, uh, that's total cost of those projects is twenty-four million nine twenty-six oh ten, which is still about, uh, a hundred thousand dollars or so under where we're supposed to be. We project, though, we're gonna be getting back somewhere between two hundred and two hundred and fifty thousand dollars when it's all said and done, due to allowances or credits that are not being used, we're essentially finished with the misdemeanor facility. However, it's scheduled to be complete on August twenty-eighth, it is, they're just doing outside site work. And in conjunction with that, they, we looked at it, they were, uh, needing to add some mulch because of the steepness of the slopes, so they've requested, uh, to do that, which was not part of the original landscape of twenty-six hundred dollars. That still leaves a contingency balance of nine thousand nine hundred seventy-two dollars, which we would recommend that they do. Now, we still have also additional balances, we had in the original project, we were allowing, carrying a fifty thousand dollar line item for landscaping. Uh, grassing is already in the construction project, I'm not sure we're even gonna need to spend any of that. We put that in there anticipating maybe some city requirements, but as you're aware of, it's back behind everything, it's not really anything to landscape. We also have, the board approved early on, they found bad dirt.
Hell, Carl, we are gonna do some landscaping there, right?
We can, we've got grassing that's already done.
Y'all might just let us do it, y'all give us the money to buy the seed, and the, the plant that's left, the trustee.
The grass is in there, it's just planting, just plants. Cause they're doing that now.
Are you talking about your facility?
Yeah.
I thought you were talking about the courthouse.
No, the courthouse, no, 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 the courthouse, you've already approved that. No, I'm talking about, back there, we also, uh, think we're gonna get back, carry on the last payout application, they still have seventy thousand plus dollars left over from bad dirt, and they've already corrected that to this date on the misdemeanor, so that, we're anticipating getting that money back in, in the final, that'll be a cha- a deductive change order. On the courthouse, their latest schedule shows mid-November. We're still carrying, uh, contingency allowance of eighty-five thousand dollars, we're not gonna use all that, uh, so that'll come back. Uh, here's, here's where I may need the mental health service, they, uh, there was more bad dirt discovered on the north side. We've now found it on north, east, and south, we hadn't found any on, 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 on the west.
Did you pick this site?
However, even, even with that fourteen thousand one hundred seventy-four dollars, which I'm recommending, there's still gonna be, right now, over fifty thousand dollars coming back to the county, uh, from the original that you approved, because they did not have to do, if you remember, that was a not-to-exceed amount, and they did not, even though they've come, they've had two others, they still looking at a balance of somewhere around fifty thousand dollar credit. And that's in the northwest corner, uh, of the parking lot. So that's where we're at on those two projects, so I guess, uh, today, what I'm asking for is approval on misdemeanor of twenty-six hundred seventy dollars for mulching, and then, uh, on the courthouse, fourteen thousand one hundred seventy-four and thirty-three dollars to take care of the, some more debris. So those would be the two things, I'm also, I, uh, gave Janice the contract for re-roofing on the DHS building. The board approved that at the last meeting, uh, we're ready to get those executed, they're ready to go, and have a pre-construction conference. We are ready, just about, I need to send Bridget the advertisement for the, uh, EOC building. We've got some front-end stuff to do on the specifications, but other than that, it's ready to go, so.
Hey, Carl, and you just mentioned the EOC building, it just gives me chills, cause I watched a video this weekend of Ward chasing raccoons through the roof of EOC. So, he's a talented guy, but one of these raccoons get him hemmed up, we're gonna lose the EOC director, did you see that? I don't know what he thought it was, but he's up there chasing it through the roof and through the tiles, and he fell, and it's just a mess, so he's not as, as slick as he used to be.
Said, Daniel, what was he doing on the roof?
Well, he was inside the ceiling, the raccoon was in there chewing through the wires of all the EOC stuff, so, but, I know it's still not a major issue to anybody, but the roof, and I know I've been harping on this thing the last couple of months, whatever we can do to expedite this situation, we got raccoons, we got water.
It's ready.
We've got millions of dollars worth of communication a year that all of our first responders have gotta have, I know it's not your fault, but all I'm asking is just, if there's any way we can put any kind of urgency.
We're gonna, we're gonna send it out for bids, advertise it next week, uh, I think it'll take by law, it's approximately three weeks by time you have, you have to advertise twice and wait on fifteen days, I think it is, or maybe four weeks, as soon as we open those bids.
I just wanna move, I mean, that's the thing, I mean, he's gonna, Ward's gonna kill himself over there chasing all the problems, but if we can.
We'll, we'll get it to him, we'll get it to him.
We actually hired a contractor, and they removed three posses out of there as of today.
How many did you get?
Well, I would, I would like to have.
That's unacceptable, you know?
About a twenty minute timeout, but.
If you, Ward, if you get back up there chasing a coon, I won't notify Chuck to make sure he's there when you catch it, I want that.
Is this completion date on the courthouse a realistic date, or is this kinda where he's dating, or kinda, that's kinda.
This is realistic, all the other ones we've had, this is realistic, all the other ones we've had.
They keep telling us they're gonna beat that date, but this is what they, their officials. No, no, I do think it is realistic, Bob, uh, they, I was out there yesterday after five, and they were working, I know my, my construction guy is there six-thirty in the mornings, and they're working, so, they're doing all they can do, they're to the point, uh, other than finishing up the site, that most of the stuff does not affect, rain does not affect, everything's going on inside for the most point. Uh, and, but it is realistic with the amount of people they're staffing and, and the type of, uh, And, but it is realistic with the amount of people they're staffing and the type of subcontractors they have on site, because their subcontractors are large subcontractors that can staff, staff projects, and they've been doing that. I said, I was out there after five Tuesday? Yeah, not Wednesday, but Tuesday, and they were, they were working. The stone and sheet rock people were working at that time.
Carl, I'm assuming this bad, more bad dirt is more parking lot area?
None of the, none of it has been, because the soil borons went deeper underneath the building, they found all that at that time. So the building is on pylons that go down thirty, forty feet. So all this has been in the parking lot. It's just, it's just junk. It wasn't, this down, it's been down. I'm not sure, to answer your question, Jay, they took thirty-something borons and, you know, a boring is like eight inches wide or a foot wide. So in between is, if they don't hit it, then it's, it's assumed to be good. But some of this stuff just pops up in between where they take them.
Do we, do we need to handle these two separately?
Yes, sir.
I thought so.
We got to add them now, or you want to wait and do it under one section? I make a motion, we're going to add both to the agenda now.
I have a motion by Bob to add these work order changes to our agenda, and Jared seconds it. Any other discussion? All in favor? Any opposed?
Motion to approve.
The misdemeanor, we got to separate them? Do we need to separate those two work orders, or?
Yeah.
I think we can take those together, guys.
Okay. All right. What's your motion, Bob?
To take them.
Bob makes a motion to accept these change orders. Second, Daniel, any other discussion? All in favor? Any opposed?
Aye.
And I do agree with the sheriff. I think what little planning could be done on misdemeanor, your group could handle that. I mean, it's, I... And just to clear, make sure it's clear, the courthouse landscaping is already been, is in budget and it's, of course, it won't be done till the end. And one thing that...
Hey, didn't we have a discussion on that courthouse landscaping about using local, who was that? Was it you brought that up, Bob?
That's part of the contract. You can't, we can't write in that part of the contract.
Didn't we talk about that? We talked about that.
We talked about, but we did also talk about making sure some of the plants were...
There were, there were some local landscapers who bid on it. Bids were very close, but the one who low-bid her was not local. Now, landscape architect was local that did that. We, in fact, we redid, we redid the original design to simplify it. But the thing about landscaping on courthouse project, they'll do all the prep work, but they may not actually do some of the planning toward, toward the end of the year, because you don't want to put it in now and have it die. So they'll wait, they'll wait till it's a little bit cooler in the fall, well, November, December or something probably is when it'll get put in.
All right. Let me ask one thing for clarity. The change order double oh-eight, which is add mulch to stabilize, to stabilize the grassing area, twenty-six hundred and seventy dollars. Brian said that they can provide the labor if we would just buy, can we use this, and that he has up to twenty-six hundred and seventy dollars, which he'll probably do it for half that, but is that what we want to do?
I was out in the hall when all of this was being discussed, so I apologize.
Well, let, let me say, the planning, I would recommend. The only thing about this mulching is the grassing is already in the contractor's contract, so this mulching is just to basically make sure that grassing doesn't, doesn't go away. So if, if, if we introduce a separate person to put, do the mulching and the grassing doesn't work, they're going to say that they, they're going to say they're not responsible for it.
Leave it alone?
If they want to plan, just let them, that way they're paying...
Okay.
But definitely the planning, the planning certainly the sheriff's people could do, and that doesn't affect anything, because we were just carrying that as a separate line item anyhow after we got...
Ms. Laura has it.
I just wanted to make sure that y'all understood in the change order for the courthouse, which was the fourteen thousand, one seventy-four thirty-three, that do, did include fourteen additional days.
No, nobody said, no.
So you might want to clarify in the order that it does or does not.
Okay. I see it now.
Yeah, I'd rather remand that fourteen days myself. Bob made the motion. Will you change your motion, remove fourteen days?
I'll pull it back. I'll pull, I'll pull that motion back.
And just revise it, and just everything good with the fourteen days?
Pre with the exception of the fourteen-day extension.
Bob revises his motion to approve, I guess that would be order number ten, change order number ten. You had seconded it, so it's, he seconds the revision to exclude the fourteen days. All in favor? Any opposed? Sheriff, where are you at on this?
I'm sorry, I wasn't paying attention.
We've got the votes. It's taking the days off, where they're not getting to do some of those. All right. So we got unanimous. Motion passes to revise it and exclude the fourteen days. All right.
Do y'all have any other questions about any of these projects, or? I know some of you have gone through the courthouse, and I'm available again if any of you want to go through.
When's the last time the judges have been through? Can we know?
Uh...
Too many times.
Six weeks or so. I can't remember, Daniel. I know...
Recently, they've been through this. Hi, Cal.
Thank you, Carl.
Appreciate it.
Y'all excuse me one second. Janice has something very important. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right. Let's move on. We have a, our next section is old business.
Motion to approve August one of August five minutes.
All right. Bob makes a motion to approve our old minutes. Daniel seconds it. Any other discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes.
Motion to approve Senator Zander.
Bob makes a motion to approve. Jared seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes.
Motion to approve. Ms. Forkberry, about putting the tox online for two thousand and eighteen to publish?
Second.
All right. We have a motion by Bob, second by Jay. Any other discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. We...
Motion to approve, Mr. Sullivan, under A for assessments for two thousand and eighteen real estate property.
We have a motion by Bob, second by Jared. Any other discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. B.
I just want to say on B, next year, they can do this in Flatwood, but I make a motion to approve.
On your conference center?
Yeah.
I like it, Bob.
It's Bob's conference center, Senator. You talking about, you always talking about?
Bob makes a motion.
Bob's conference center. It's his idea. Especially after January. That's Bob's idea down there.
Bob and Gary's conference center. Or Gary and Bob's. I'll let him go first.
I hope we use it a lot. Bob, you making a motion on that one? All right. Do we have a second?
Second.
Jared seconds it. Any other discussion? All in favor? Any opposed?
Motion to approve C, homestead exemption.
Motion, uh, C, y'all caught me off guard.
Sorry, brother.
Request, uh, request approval of certain homestead ex, okay. Bob, you made the motion. Do I have a second? I'll second it. All right. I've seconded it. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. D.
Motion to approve D, one mail to the section, whatever code.
All right. Bob makes a motion. Jay seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. Ms. Bridget.
I'll go ahead and take care of A for the copier contract. Motion to approve.
Ready to get out of here.
All right. Bob makes a motion to approve copier contract. Daniel seconds it. Any other discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes.
My second item, I'm, we're awarding bids for the unit system. The first is the pre-cast bridge components. My recommendation is award it to the sole bid received from Silver Needle LLC. And item two, bridge installation, recommend that we award that to Key LLC.
Makes motion approved.
Jared, Jared makes a motion to approve. Jay seconds it. Any other discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Mike Harrison.
Motion to approve number A. Mr. Harrison, I'll let him be. I'll let Mr. Carl take care of the permits.
All right. Bob makes a motion to approve A. And we have a second?
Tell me, what is the, on A, what it says to share with, what is young members committee?
Yeah, what is that?
Be young, young engineers and younger people that's in the field doing this work, Jared. It's not a youth thing. It's be younger people, just, just getting out of college.
And what are we, what are we sharing with them?
We're going to put together a, our pavement presentation, like different chip seals, micros of how we've been doing, and PowerPoints and...
Where's it, where are we doing this?
This will be in San Antonio. I'm just asking for the approval to put the PowerPoints and stuff together to be able to share that with them right now.
This is in February?
This is in February, but the date, the place hasn't been set, so I haven't asked for authority of that yet, because I don't know exactly. I just know it's in San Antonio and it's in February, but the date hasn't been set on that.
I'll second. Bob, you make the motion, is that right?
Yes.
I'll second.
Bob makes a motion. Daniel seconds it. Any other discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? All right. Motion passes. B.
All right. So items B through G looks like AT&T and then one ceasefire deal. My only question on, because I'll put all those together in the same motion. My only question is, should that wait? Because every one of these locations that they've got on here, we've got projects going on, road projects going on.
They're in the, back, me and Tim's converse with this, they're in the back edge of the right of way.
We think. Or the plan's sake, they're in the back. Whether they actually are or not, we know how that kind of goes down. I don't know.
I mean, we're just trying to get it approved. I told Janice, we're going to go out in the field and look at these and make sure that they're not going to interfere with our projects before we release them to them. Daniel?
Would you rather me wait on all that?
No, I'd rather take them under and then we'll, we'll hold up on our end. If we have a problem, then we can readjust on our end.
And adjust the permits if it's going to cause a problem. All right. So I'll make a motion for B through G, as in George, to be approved.
If we have to readjust, adjust them, then I'll bring it back to y'all.
Second.
All right. We have a motion by Daniel, second by Bob. Any other discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you, Mike. This should feel good today.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
First item that I have on the agenda is, I'm recommending approval of an amended plat for Dogwood Trace Phase One, amended two.
All right.
This is where they were changing some lots.
What, uh, we still did not go below whatever, I mean, I think it made some lots bigger.
That's what we were doing, making the lots larger.
Right.
Yes.
All right. I'll make a motion. Will you approve that? I have, I made a motion, it's tied down on that end. I'm going to give it to Jared. Jared seconds it. Any other discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you. Second item is the approval of the amended plat for Dogwood Trace Phase Two, amended two.
And it was very similar, just making some lots in the back bigger?
Yes, sir.
All right. I'll make that motion.
Second.
Uh-huh. Jay got it. I made a motion. Jay seconded. Any other discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes.
Next item is, we're requesting authorization to advertise for bids for Andrew Chapel Road Improvement. This will be a clearing and grubbing contract, Phase One.
This is on the end that our acquisition team has secured, and, and this is just clearing and grubbing where we can, okay?
That's great.
I'll make, yeah.
Are we on D?
C.
C.
I got you. My eyes are running together.
All right. I make that motion.
Second.
All right. Jay seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. Can I ask, kind of, we just, we are going to be able to go back and recoup, bring this money out of the barn?
Yes.
Okay, I thought so, but I don't...
I had a curious question. Why are we breaking it down like this?
Because they're buying, they're, on the other end, that's where the houses, residents and things are that they're having to buy. That could be in court a year.
Oh, I thought we, we still got more of that?
There's, there's seventy-seven, seventy-eight percent complete, but the part that's left is where the biggest obstacles are.
Right.
Well, you can't relocate it till it is.
Well, I just didn't know.
No, I'm just saying, you can't relocate it till it's gone.
Originally, we weren't talking about that. All right. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, requesting authorization to advertise for bids on the Goner Road Reconstruction. There again, that's a clearing and grubbing contract, District One.
I make motion approved.
Second.
Jared made a motion. Jay seconded. Any other discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion pass.
Thank you. Next item I have on the agenda is authorization to advertise for bids for Hanley Circle Street Improvements, and that's in District Two.
All right. Good work, Daniel.
Yeah, I'm making motion approved.
Second.
All right. Daniel makes a motion. Jay seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the Holly Bush Road Improvement Project. We recommend approval of a contract summary change order from Southern Rock LLC for the Holly Bush Road Project, Improvement Project, in the amount of a decrease of ten thousand, four hundred and forty-two dollars and eighty-four cents.
And we also come in under contract or...
That's correct.
Overall, so we got other monies too.
That's correct.
That's a pretty good job.
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you. I'll make that motion.
Who's that, whose area is that in?
My, my area. We finished under contract and held back ten thousand.
That's correct.
Thank you. Let me say that again. We finished.
Chuck just got back in here. You said finished. Is it finished?
Yeah.
All right. We shut it out. That's it.
That's it.
We're done.
The next item I have, cover that.
All right. Next, go ahead, Mr. Parker.
Thank you. Item G, the Holly Bush Road Improvement Project. We recommend approval of the final application of pay from Southern Rock LLC for work performed on the Holly Bush Road Project, Improvement Project in the amount of one hundred and sixteen thousand, two hundred and sixty-four dollars and fifty, and sixty-six cents. We recommend the project be accepted and completed and begin the one-year warranty and authority to issue that check.
I make the motion.
Second.
I'll just let Jay.
Okay. All right. I made a motion. Jared, Jared seconded. Any other discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes.
Who's district is that?
That'd be mine.
Mr. President, I'd like to add one item to the agenda if I could on, it's a pay request on Oak Grove Drive.
This, yeah.
All right. This would be...
Is that added?
This would be a H, add.
I make motion approved.
No, we got to add it. Oh, add it first.
Approve, add it to the...
Okay, all right. Jay makes a motion to add it. Jared seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? It's added.
Okay, we're, this is pay request number three, and we recommend payment in the amount of forty thousand, nine hundred and fifteen thousand dollars to Hill Construction Company. Any can authority to issue that check.
Much approved.
Jay makes a motion. Jared seconds. Any other discussion?
Hey, just, can you give an update on where we're at on...
Yeah, Jake, it's going great, actually. They showed up back out there. We had a meeting out there Monday morning. The crews are out there. The lining will be in next week. They're going to do the lining. And they say in eight weeks, they're going to be finished.
It's moving real well right now.
Is it inside that, that forty thousand inside that original budget side of it?
This was, but yeah.
Eventually it won't be, but this is still inside.
Yeah.
Hate to say this, but good job, Jenny.
Yeah.
You nailed that, you took it.
I, I don't think nothing be said about a good job on this project.
That's why I was gonna give you one.
Let's, uh, I don't think we, we were still under discussion, so now all in favor?
Uh huh.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Craig Slay.
Under Mr. Slay, I say we can consolidate A through F, set the public hearing for August twenty-ninth, two thousand nineteen.
Second.
All right. Bob makes a motion to put A through F together and handle them all as one. And he made the motion to set them. Daniel seconds that motion. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Uh huh.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Mr. President, item. Thank you, sir. Miss, Miss President, item G is a public hearing on the J.T. Crownover and Robert Covington rezoning request. This is Highway four sixty-nine north, it's a District Three. Uh, Mr. Crownover and the county, uh, on its own motion, as opposed to what your agenda item says, Mr. Covington. The county is bringing, uh, the motion itself as it relates to the Covington parcel, are seeking to rezone two adjoining parcels that are located on Highway four sixty-nine. Mr. Crownover owns the one point four-nine acre parcel with an existing mini storage facility on it. The property is currently zoned A-one. He is seeking to change the zoning to C-two. Uh, the parcel that is occupied by Mr. Covington is a point seventy-nine acre parcel, it's currently zoned R-one B. Uh, and the county is seeking to change that zoning from R-one B to C-two to match the adjoining parcel. Uh, this property's been used for seasonal fireworks stand since two thousand and four. That's the piece that we're talking about, that's the point seventy-nine. These two parcels have joined C-two zoning to the north. If the change to C-two is approved, then Mr. Crownover will move to seek a conditional use permit to expand the existing mini storage facility and add outside storage for recreational vehicles and boats. Okay, so we will open that public hearing. I'll ask if there is anyone here to speak in opposition to the request by J.T. Crownover and the county to rezone the parcels that have been described. Anyone here to speak on that matter? Mr. President, I don't see anyone here to speak on that matter. We'll close that public hearing. At this time, it'd be appropriate to take action on the rezoning.
Quick history on this, this truck is part of a hundred and seventy-five acre truck rezoned, rezoned back in January. Uh, the Nichols Farm out there, it was, that's who owned the property, uh, so that's why I went to it, it was an A-one zoning. Uh, Mr. Crownover bought the, the facilities, and was gonna make improvements. He's actually gonna ultimately build two more, two more buildings?
Yeah.
Two more buildings, that storage buildings out there, I felt like it needed to go, and plus the fact that it front locked, it was a residential use, and it was not gonna go residential, given the fact it sits right across from a, a convenience store. We need to clean up that area and get it to a CT zoning that's compatible with the other two parcels to the north. Uh, so, uh, but that's kind of a little bit of a history of this parcel, uh, and what we're trying to accomplish.
Well, don't you think it'd look better if we didn't have vehicles parked out front?
Well, this, this was not the most because the, the, the point seven acre truck sits in front of the, uh, mini storage facility. And it, and the mini storage, it kind of sits down, it's down a little hill, so you don't see the parking as much as you do this. And the parking is really more of an interim. How long do you think it's gonna be before you build the building? Come on up, Mr. Crownover, please, and get you on change.
We just wanna do the temporary, uh, uncovered parking where the two buildings, additional buildings gonna be built as we make improvement. There's a lot of deferred maintenance that hasn't been done. Gates were hanging off the hinges, the sign was.
Looks a lot better, he did, he's made an investment there, sir.
We're starting to clean it up, gonna repave the whole place.
Are you gonna ultimately have something in front of the outside storage?
Well, there already is a parcel. We're completely, uh, blocked off from the road except for one access, about a twenty-foot access to the highway. So, we're not real visible from the road anyway.
And the parking is an interim deal.
Yeah.
He's going to be, when he builds the two buildings, the outside parking goes away. There's not enough land to do that.
We're just gonna, we're just gonna use it to try to make it financially feasible to add those buildings as we get it.
All right.
Any other questions before I make a motion? I make a motion to approve the rezoning. And the gentleman on behalf of the, of the fireworks stand goes back, he was not here, but he's in, he's in compliance with what I comply, but he agreed with the rezoning request. So, uh, but yeah.
All right, second. All right. Uh, Bob makes a motion. Jay got the second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Uh huh.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Item H, uh, in like manner, is, uh, is now going to go forward in light of the fact that the board has approved the rezoning. So, Mr. Crownover is now seeking the conditional use permit that would allow him to expand the mini storage facility that's located at sixteen thirty-three Highway four sixty-nine north. There's two existing storage buildings on the property that contain sixty-six units. Plat shows two temporary parking areas for recreational vehicles and boats and air, uh, et cetera, and a future addition of two mini storage buildings. This, there's an existing dirt pad to the, to the north property line, and he plans to add the gravel for uncovered parking of recreational vehicles and boats. It will be approximately twelve spaces, and this is a one point four-nine acre parcel. It's now zoned C-two. All right? So, I'll open that public hearing, ask if there is anyone here to speak in opposition to the J.T. Crownover conditional use request. Is anyone to speak in opposition on that matter? Mr. President, I don't see anyone here to speak in opposition. We'll close that public hearing, it'd be appropriate to take action.
I think the only issue I see here at J.T. maybe is the lighting, not if we ever talked about it, but kind of keep it to a directness, because you do have a home to the south of you. So, I think that's the only thing I see that may be.
Right, yeah. And we had talked to the homeowner next door, and he, he was actually excited about having installed some lighting, security cameras and all that stuff, so. But we are on that side of the building, we are gonna keep it mounted at the, the eve of the building, not up real high, spreading over the whole area.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Bob makes a motion. Jared seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Uh huh.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Mr. President, item I is a public hearing on the Jackie Jones Conditional Use Permit at twelve eighty-six Highway four seventy-one. This is District Four. Uh, we'll open that public hearing. Ms. Jones is seeking a conditional use permit to replace an old manufactured home at twelve eighty-six Highway four seventy-one with a, with a new thirty-two by eighty manufactured home. It's a point sixty-four acre parcel zoned RE-one. Plans to install, uh, brick skirting around the bottom of the home. Ms. Jones has filed an application with the State Department of Health for approval of the existing sewer system. So, we'll open, uh, that public hearing is open. I'll ask if there is anyone here to speak in opposition to the Jackie Jones Conditional Use Permit. Anyone here to speak in opposition on that matter? Mr. President, I don't see anyone here to speak in opposition on that matter. We'll close the public hearing. At this time, it'd be appropriate to take action.
Thank you. I'll, I'll make that motion. Uh, I, this is, in the county on four seventy-one, there's a, like a nineteen-sixties model, uh, mobile home that they're removing. It's gonna be much of an upgrade. Uh, I think that it's, I think it'll add to the atmosphere.
Second.
All right. I've made a motion, Jay seconds motion. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Uh huh.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Mr. President, item J is a public hearing on the M&amp;F Construction LLC Conditional Use Permit, Highway four seventy-one. This is District Two. Uh, the permit, uh, application is actually under the name Seven Properties LLC, is that not right?
They're the only one property.
Okay. All right, good. The application's in M&amp;F, uh, and they're seeking a conditional use permit to continue mining operations on Highway four seventy-one. They were previously approved to mine four acres of a sixty-two acre parcel on May the fifteenth of two thousand and nineteen. Uh, uh, that conditional use permit will expire when the Department of Transportation Highway forty-three project is completed and is scheduled to be opened to the public on August the ninth. They would like to continue to mine the property and sell suitable fill material for house pads and other construction projects in the area. Proposed hours of operation are Monday through Saturday, seven AM to five PM. They have a certificate of permit coverage from DOT. It, it will expire, uh, March of twenty, March of thirty-first of two thousand and twenty-three. Should that be DEQ? It's DOT. I was going, what in the world? Okay, so it's a DEQ permit, my bad. And the property is zoned RE-one. We'll open that public hearing. I'll ask if there is anyone here to speak in opposition to the M&amp;F Construction LLC Conditional Use Permit request. Anyone to speak in opposition on that matter? Mr. President, I don't see anyone here to speak in opposition on that matter. At this time, it'd be appropriate to take whatever action the board deems necessary.
Yeah, and one thing I want to mention too, this has been going on for several months now as far as the mining project and operations, and I think they're falling well inside the boundaries and regulations we've given them before. And I don't have any complaints in that area regarding it. So, that being said, as long as they're good neighbors with everybody, and they still are. Ms. Renee?
There was some original conditions which are all the same, however, they're asking for an extra hour in the afternoons. It was seven to four during the, uh, MDOT project, uh, but now they're asking to get work from seven to five. Um, which we, you know, on the other, when they were working, we did have one call from a lady who lived out there next door, because they were accessing, going in next door to her. They've moved further to the north.
I mean, I would rather keep it on the same timeframe right now, and then if it's still an issue, then we'll come back and look at it.
Okay, so the.
About five o'clock, because that would get them out of there by the time that traffic fills up on four seventy-one. I'd rather keep it at four, seven to four. But with that being said, that'd be my motion to keep it at seven to four and.
Okay.
Uh, approve.
Approve the conditional use request with the exception being that we keep the hours of operation.
Existing time.
As they are presently.
Second.
All right. Daniel makes a motion, Jay seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Uh huh.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Mr. President, item K is a public hearing for the Lori Miller Conditional Use Permit, one twenty-one Cheryl's Lane. This is District Two. Ms. Miller is seeking a conditional use permit to replace her existing home with a newer model manufactured home. Property's located at one twenty-one Cheryl's Lane. It's a one point nine zero acre parcel zoned RE-one. We'll open that public hearing. I'll ask if there is anyone here to speak in opposition to the Lori Miller Conditional Use Permit. Anyone here to speak in opposition on that matter? Mr. President, I don't see anyone here to speak in opposition. This time, it'd be appropriate to close that public hearing and to take action.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Daniel makes a motion. Jared seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Uh huh.
Motion passes.
Mr. President, with your indulgence, if I may, uh, may we take up the item that is now listed under additional business to be discussed? Mr. Troxler, Executive Director of Rankin First, has an appointment that he needs to get to, and it's very important, he's, he's going to talk to lawyers. And so, I want, uh, I want to make sure he gets there. Somebody's actually smart, educated, competent, talking to lawyers is a good thing. Uh, and so, if, if we may, I'd like to take up the matter of, of what you see under additional business with your indulgence.
Hey, can, can I do one thing before that on public, because we're still under public hearings. Before we go to Tom, just a second, I want to mention one thing that came up on a public hearing we had on the fifth of the month. And if it's all right, I'd like to mention one thing on that.
Sure.
Since we're under public hearings, and I hadn't talked to you about it, so I'm gonna kind of reach you up to speed on it.
We're winging it.
Absolutely. Well, myself and Renee have been in communications with the approval of the commercial building on Fanning Land and Circle, which was gonna be a rental-type storage facility. And, uh, on the fifth, we came in, had the public hearing, we listed out all the additional requirements we asked for them, storage inside the structure, nothing on the outside.
Yes, I remember that.
You read it over it, I read over it, Ms. Renee read over it, uh, and I asked, uh, the tenant to be sure he understood it. He stood up in the meeting, said, yes, he was. Over the last few days, then, I guess everybody's memory got fogged, because they don't remember the agreement side of it. So, what they've asked for at this point is not to proceed with the, um, conditional use approval that we had and have another, another public hearing set to allow them to put equipment outside of the structure.
Okay.
Ms. Renee, I framed that right?
Yes.
So, what I'd like to do is come back and take some action, if we need to, on the, on the original approval of the permit we made a week ago on the fifth. Stop that process. We're gonna have an additional hearing on the proper days. Ms. Renee, I'll publish it out, coming back up.
We're starting over.
Well, the process is already done, so we, they just need to do another one.
Do another one, so everything's in place. I didn't know what the process needs to be on that, but.
I, I would ask.
If we need to take action on the board, I don't know, so.
So, just as a matter of bells and suspenders, uh, I, I agree with Daniel. Let's go ahead and make this as clear as it can be, in light of the fact that there may have been some confusion about what happened.
Right.
Uh, let's go ahead and make it as clear as we can be. So, I think Daniel's motion would be to add an item to the agenda, which would be to consider the rescission of a prior granted conditional use. Is that right, Renee? Prior granted conditional use? Uh, and Renee can give the details about who the applicant was. I don't remember the names, unfortunately. But it's the action that was taken by the board.
On Fanning Land and Circle.
On the fifth of August, is that when we did that? Okay. And so, that would be Daniel's motion to add that item to the agenda.
That'll be my motion.
All right.
I have a motion by Daniel to add it to the agenda.
Second.
Second by Bob. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Uh huh.
Then my motion now would be to eliminate.
Rescind, yes.
Or rescind the, uh.
Second.
Prior granted conditional use.
Correct.
Daniel makes a motion to rescind, uh, Bob seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Uh huh.
Any opposed?
All right, so then, do we need to make a motion to go ahead and authorize Ms. Renee to set the public hearing?
Well, they're gonna resubmit a new application, so I'll do that.
All right, so we'll go through that process. All right, thank you.
It'll come back, just like it did before.
Start back over on, on conditional uses, thank you.
All right.
Sorry about that, Tom. If I didn't do it right then, I'd forget, my mind's, I'm losing it.
Mr. President, with your indulgence, we will move now to the additional business item for Mr. Troxler, and I would invite Mr. Troxler to come forward.
Good morning and thank you. We're blessed to have such great public and time and education for our young people in Rankin County, but, uh, it's a little bit scary when we start, uh, uh, giving continuing education credit from listening to me to a bunch of land title attorneys. I'm not real sure what that is. Uh, Regina was very nice and gave me, uh, gave me this thing, I'm not sure what to do with it, but hopefully when I get there, I'll be able to do something with it and, and make a forty-five minute talk with it and make a 45-minute talk so they, these attorneys can get their continuing education credits.
I'd take Regina with you.
Well, she's going to Richland to their economic development luncheon today, so we've got everything covered. But I appreciate everything y'all do for us, and in front of you are the eight companies that qualified for tax exemptions in the 2018 period. They all had everything to our tax assessor by June 1st of 2019. John and his staff have looked them over, and they met all of the criteria set forth by the state and the county, and our board approved these at our last meeting, and I would ask that you all would approve these. They've created $52 million of investment in the county over the last year and 660, a little bit over 660 jobs in the county that were not here previously.
Motion to approve.
Bob makes a motion. Jay seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, okay. He can take it. We did table one at the request of John and Craig. Thank y'all for all y'all taking care of it.
I think y'all know where I stand on that one.
So I wanted to make sure that you guys understood what you'd just done. You've granted the avalo of tax exemptions as reflected in item 14, and you've also approved the action of the Rankin First Board, which is to table one request. So that matter is, has not been granted. I wanted to make sure you understand that. There's one on your list that their board tabled, and all you're doing is affirming their action to table. You're not granting any exemption to that particular corporation. Okay?
All right.
That's just clarity for the record.
We had a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion pass.
Mr. President, thank you for indulging.
Thank you, Mr. Matt Craig. Regina, please give my regards. I probably won't make that one, as you can tell. Thank you.
Mr. President, items L and M have already been addressed by the board earlier, so item N would be the next matter, which is consideration of and approved, potential action to approve, an MOU between PRV and Rankin County that provides for cooperation with respective traffic light cameras on PRV property.
Don't they?
Blame that, yeah.
Pretty much PRV just kind of just likes to shove it in our face when they so choose, and then they need something from us that's all, let's have a group hug and just approve it.
Well, we've got several things that are still pending with PRV regarding that bridge and everything else, so.
The short answer is that this is not costing the county anything. This is actually just a cooperation agreement where we shared that. I'm looking at the sheriff to make sure I'm on target here. I think I'm right. Basically, we cooperate with respect to the equipment itself, the data storage. If PRV has an issue and they need access to the data, we will cooperate with them, and vice versa. If we need access to the data, they will cooperate with us.
Okay.
This is a real-time camera system with the flow wood with the state. More or less, you can just read. You can look at our cameras if you let us look at yours. So we look at the cameras real-time, so we have access to them. So if stolen car comes through or something like that, it alerts of, would alert them and us. But if we have a burglary, we got the tag number of suspect, and we go back and search if you want to call them or not. So it's just information sharing.
That's correct.
Well, I guess, you know. If you put it like that.
I felt like I needed to add that, Bob.
Doesn't hurt.
All right, I'll make that motion.
Second.
All right, I've made the motion. Bob seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, Ray.
Bob always cowers down to share.
I got a leg.
That's true. That's true. Please take good care of yourselves here. Item O is authority to remit payment of invoices that were submitted for the purchase of two dump trucks that you see listed there and the dump beds associated with them, and both of those were issued in accordance with, both of your purchase orders were issued in accordance with the bidding requirements that's set forth under the bidding law, and this board unanimously agreed to authorize same. It's noted that Section 191127, which is one of those election year statutes that would otherwise apply, it does not apply to this particular transaction because of the way it was handled. And so you're simply confirming that the action was taken pursuant to state law and does not violate any other provision of state law, and you're authorizing the payment for the invoices that have been submitted.
Motion to approve.
All right. Jay makes a motion. Bob second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
This next item, item P, would be related to your new road project called Florence Byron Parkway, also known as the Gunnar Road Extension Project. You're authorizing a professional services agreement with Benchmark Engineering, and you're asking or authorizing your board president to execute that agreement.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, we got a motion by Jared, second. By Bob. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Mr. President, if I may indulge once again, and I know I've spent too much time up here talking, but I wanted to take this point in our meeting to reflect on yesterday's events with respect to the bond issue. The board, the board has some information about that, but I think this is probably as good a time as any to point out what happened yesterday, the unique circumstances we found ourselves in, and the good result for the county. And so I'm available to answer any questions that the board may have about that process. Quick summation on yesterday's events are this. We found ourselves in one of the, I think our professionals would classify yesterday's circumstances with respect to our bond offering as a very unique set of circumstances and circumstances that we're not likely to see again. It was kind of a one-off. So what happened yesterday was information from the federal government concerning the return that we find on federally-issued treasury bills. We found ourselves, the market found itself in what's called an inversion, where the 10-year T-bill rate of return was actually lower than the 2-year T-bill rate of return, and that gives off particular signals to the market. And so what we saw in equities yesterday was a lot of money leaving. Our professionals told us that what that reflects is some of your larger institutional investors were looking for quality investments yesterday. And so it just so happened to timeout for us that that's when Rankin County was offering its bond issue that the board has already passed. And so the outcome was this. You had a lot of really high-powered investors looking for quality investments, and as the board is aware, we were recently rated by Moody's Investor Service as a quality investment. And where Moody's decided to rate Rankin County is at the head of the list of all counties in Mississippi. We have the highest rating of any county in the state of Mississippi.
I didn't hear you.
Yes. Rankin County has the highest bond rating of all counties in Mississippi. Our rating is now, has now been moved to A1.
You get all that, Chuck.
So there has been some talk about the fact that the rating was improved. At the time that the rating agency promulgated its rating to us, there was not real certainty about what the outcome would be, how much of a difference it might make. So what yesterday reflected was an actual way for us to sort of grade what our bond rating has done for us. So I'm going to give you the short version, which is this. The board authorized the issuance of up to and not to exceed $28 million in bonds, and that is for a multitude of projects that we have talked about at length over several board meetings. And so the board was trying to wrestle with how much do we need to issue, and what would be our interest rate, and what would be the repayment terms for that? And so all of that had to be sorted out. But as you know, until you get into the market and you actually offer the bonds, you don't really know what you're dealing with. You don't know how much you're going to get out of the proceeds. You don't know exactly what your interest rate is going to be, and you don't actually know, there's some ways to sort of calculate, and the professionals know what they're doing, but there's no way to really know what the repayment terms are going to be at that point. So it wasn't until yesterday we found that out. The bond rating improvement has helped us to this point. We didn't have to issue $28 million in bonds to get the proceed amount that we were looking for or hoping for.
With the additional premium, is what you're saying.
That's correct. And so you guys were aware that we were anticipating an issuance of about $28 million in bonds and a proceeds amount of about $30 million. That's sort of where we felt like we would be, and the market was sort of giving off signals that's probably where we would be. Your professionals had proformed at all this. That means they gave some estimates and had equated our repayment terms to be roughly in the neighborhood of 3% to 3.5%. That would be our interest rate. Okay? And so we structured all of this planning around that. What happened yesterday was we had to back down the issuance amount to $27 million, and the proceeds that were, that will be tendered to the county at closing is almost $31 million. And so what we found yesterday in the circumstances of the market was your bond rating, the value that Rankin County is in the market for bonds, the quality investment that it is, you found some really big investors saying, that's a good buy. And so you have, we will anticipate a project fund deposit in the neighborhood of $31 million to fund all of our projects over a three-year period, and your interest rate is not in the 3% to 3.5% range. Your interest rate, effective interest rate will be 2.146%. 2.15% on your interest rate. That is a win-win-win for Rankin County taxpayers. That is an excellent signal that we're doing what we need to do to keep our house in order, and what I will call neutral third parties think that Rankin County is an excellent investment.